And that's a good point. That's always quite dangerous, not in the middle of the summer.
Did you good.
It's kind of like at work. There's a political action committee lobby group for election walk.
Well, I still got another minute. I just thought we might get quiet for a minute. I thought maybe they looked like we were getting ready to do business. Good evening. We'll call our meeting of the Ardenale Statesville Schools Board of Education to order. It's like everybody got quiet here all at one time, so I guess that's our cue to start. And the clock says six o'clock, and we like to start on time. We do appreciate each one coming tonight and giving of your time, especially those of you who work within our school system and perform great duties with little resources sometimes. And we're happy to be able to recognize you all tonight for the work that you do for us. So this is one of our favorite meetings of the year when we are able to formally congratulate and thank you all for the service that you perform for the students of this county. As we begin our meeting, let's all bow for a few moments in silent meditation. I'll ask each one to meditate about the business that we have before us tonight, especially keeping in mind the interest of all the students within our system. So if you will bow with me. Thank you. Let's stand for the presentation of the colors. Thank you. We'll begin tonight's meeting with the consent agenda. We do not have any items under the administration section, so we'll move on into personnel. For those that are following the agenda with me, we'll cover items B, C, D, and E, the acceptance of resignations, retirements, rehires, terminations, and leaves of absence, the acceptance of classified personnel, approval of licensed personnel, and approval of administrative appointments. Dr. Lassane.
Dr. Cash, Mr. Johnson, member of the, members of the board, you have had the opportunity to review the September personnel report. Are there any questions?
Questions or comments about the personnel report?
Thank you.
Also, you have the minutes from August 5th Committee of the Whole Meeting, the August 11th End of the Year Work Session Meeting, and August 12th Board of Education Meeting. And so if there are no additions or corrections to those minutes, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the consent agenda items and these minutes from August. Have a motions or second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, have a motion and a second, any discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. So now let's get on into the recognition portion of our meeting. Ask the Teacher of the Year video, Dawn Creeson.
Yes, sir. Since we're recognizing, recognizing all the of the years, we thought that it was only fitting that we share our third Teacher of the Year video of Ms. Linda Dearman from NB Mills Elementary School.
Meet Mrs. Linda Dearman, the 2013-2014 Ardenale Statesville Schools Teacher of the Year. Mrs. Dearman currently teaches first graders at NB Mills Elementary School and is wrapping up her 16th year of teaching. Although Mrs. Dearman is teaching elementary school students, during her tenure, she has also taught middle school students, continuing education classes at Mitchell Community College, and has worked at a preschool. Many teachers work tirelessly to conference with every child's parents. Admired by her colleagues, Mrs. Dearman reaches out to the parents by taking them to breakfast on Saturday mornings, building bridges that change the trajectories of her students' lives.
I have a passion for teaching children, young children, especially children who come from less advantaged homes, and teaching them how to read and do math and just equal the playing field. It brings me great joy. It's never boring.
She explained that in order for teachers to remain in the classroom and not run for other occupations, our leaders must be poised with assurance that together we will work things out. Sometimes, change is good.
I think with the assessments, the new assessments that have come through at the high school, the MSLs, and at our level, the M-class wireless generation, it's been a rough year, it's been a challenging year, but I think that we just need to stay calm, and it will be okay. I think that's the message we need to get out, is that we've been through other stuff before, and we'll get through this together, and it's going to be a joining together. And if we don't like anything, then we need to let DPI know about it.
Mrs. Dearman's classroom is not like any other, and according to coworker Robert Brawley, her spunk inspires him.
She's got spunk. And as you know, we all need spunk. And so we are teachers in classroom. She's very creative. She always thinks about her students, and she doesn't just teach it the way she's teaching. She gets bodily kinesthetic, she gets the kids up out of their seats, she gets them moving, so they're always engaged, they're always enjoying what you're doing. So she just really goes above and beyond with her kids.
In a recommendation that Allison Whitaker, instructional facilitator at Cloverleaf Elementary, wrote, she stated, "Mrs. Dearman is the embodiment of a lifelong learner." Not only is Mrs. Dearman about to graduate with her master's degree, but has found a new desire to learn more about technology in the classroom.
Last fall, I took a class at Appalachian on technology in the classroom, and I was taken there dragging my feet because I just wanted to stick with the chalk and the chalkboard from when I first started teaching in 1984. Well, now, we use Animoto, I use Brain Shark, we get online, they have the iPad. This is how our children learn. Whether I'm comfortable with it or not, that's the technology that they're used to. If they're not comfortable writing, then they, then they need to be able to write on the computer. They need to learn how to read on the computer, because that's going to be their future. And I need to be ready as a teacher to help them be successful in that future.
According to her students, Mrs. Dearman can show other teachers how to make learning fun, and we could not agree more. Congratulations, Mrs. Linda Dearman, 2013-2014 Ardenale Statesville Schools Teacher of the Year.
Next, we'll move on to the Community Schools Award. Ask Susie Weiberg to present that.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. Well, it's fitting, then, that we have Kefir Kia as our Community Schools Award tonight because of what they have done for Mrs. Dearman. And I didn't see Dwayne Smith. Dwayne Smith is here. Over the summer, Kefir Kia is in Morrisville, and they contacted our district. And the folks at Kefir, most notably, Mr. Smith, wanted to find a way to be a part of our schools and to really give back. And so we began brainstorming about things that they could do. They really wanted to focus on the Teacher of the Year first. And I have a feeling that Mrs. Dearman is really happy they did, because at the end of July, Linda Dearman picked up her brand-new Kia Optima to drive for the academic year. And I think that immediately she went to Tennessee in it. But I think she told you she went to Huntersville, so that's, you know. And I don't know if NB Mills has a spot for their Teacher of the Year, but I'm pretty sure Linda is parking over several lines to keep that, that car protected. But this is like Ronco on TV, but wait, there's more. Because now, Kefir Kia is going to be working on a program that we're rolling out this month for recognition of Students of the Month. And I just think it's pretty amazing that a company has really set the, set the mark pretty high for recognizing students and teachers. And we wanted to recognize Kefir Kia this month, and Dwayne Smith is the general manager. So if you would please come up here. Ms. Bonham has the Community Schools Award, and thank you for making our Teacher of the Year feel really special. I will not use the description she used to describe her car that she wasn't going to have to drive right now, but it was something about sweaty socks and ballet shoes. So, thank you. Thank you so much. And Ms. Bonham has your certificate.
Next, I'll ask Ethan Todd to come forward. We will have a series of recognitions of the People of the Year in the different departments. So Ethan's going to begin with the Teachers of the Year from each school.
Thank you, Dr. Cash, board members. Mr. Johnson, it is my distinct privilege tonight to share with you in recognition of all of our different Teachers of the Year from the various sites across our district. If I could invite Dr. Cash and Mr. Johnson to the front to help me recognize these individuals, I will call them up and ask those who are in attendance tonight to please remain standing up here. We'll applaud you at the end. And I know Ms. Creeson wants to get a photo of everybody up here. That's probably the easiest, most efficient way to do this, but the most effective way to recognize you tonight. They start with the corner closest to you, Dr. Cash, and we'll start with Brawley Middle School. And as a footnote to all of this, we tried to RSVP with every site this evening, and there were a lot of unclear's because of sports schedules, kids' schedules, so on and so forth, but a lot and share of folks are here tonight, and we're very proud to have them with us. So first, Brawley Middle School, we'd like to invite up Andrea Oftchess. Katz, we'd like to invite up Linda Marshall. Celeste Hinkle, we'd like to invite up Pelham Gentry. Central, we'd like to invite up Lisa Shankle. Cloverleaf Elementary School, Ashley Westland. Cottle Creek Elementary School, Amanda Yao. CCTL Early College, Michael Ginnerty. Cool Spring Elementary School, Amanda Harrington. East Iredell Elementary School, Claudia Henderson. East Iredell Middle School, Kimberly Kohler. Harmony Elementary School, Mitzi Mitchell. Lake Norman Elementary School, Leslie Pritchett. Lake Norman High School, Anne Sloan. Lake Shore Elementary School, Heather Coughlin. Lake Shore Middle School, Sherry Cash. Monticello School, Dale Goño II. Mount Morn School, Ms. Ginger Kislik. NB Mills Elementary School, Ms. Linda Dearman. North Iredell High School, Bobby Williams. North Iredell Middle School, Mark Florrie. Northview School, Elizabeth White. Presley School, James Satchwell. Scotts Elementary School, Tammy Smith. Sharon Elementary School, Jamie Wyke. Shepherd Elementary School, Jennifer Rash. South Iredell High School, Jill Parker. Statesville High School, Gregory Stewart. Statesville Middle School, Janet Spicer. Third Creek Elementary School, Michael Gerwitz. Troutman Elementary School, Kelly Carney. Troutman Middle School, Lee Chapman. Union Grove Elementary School, Daniel Suarez. VPAC, John Bailey. West Iredell High School, Buck Gatton. West Iredell Middle School, Anita McMillan. And Woodland Heights Elementary School, Ms. Kristy Wagner.
Dr. Cash, board members, Mr. Johnson, also I have with me... Sure. Three rows?
Yeah.
Okay. You guys want to orchestrate yourself three rows? Need to squeeze you in a little bit. Is there a representative from Wells Fargo with us tonight, Paul or Ms. Morgan?
Well, Dr. Cash, Mr. Johnson, board members, it is my distinct privilege to say that Wells Fargo, another partner of Iredell Statesville Schools, has stepped up to the plate again. And they put, put up some money. They gave monetary rewards to the Wells Fargo Outstanding Teacher for Lower Grades, Wells Fargo Outstanding Teacher for Upper Grades, and of course, our Teacher of the Year. And this year, I am happy to say I have three checks in my hand, and Dr. Cash, if you'll help me give these out. Our Wells Fargo Outstanding Educator for Lower Grades is Ms. Kristy Wagner. Our Wells Fargo Outstanding Educator for Upper Grades, and I don't think he's here, so he said I could take his check, Dr. Cash. That would be Buck Gatton. And of course, our Teacher of the Year, Ms. Linda Dearman. Thank you.
Next, we have the Teacher Assistant of the Year. Ask Linda Gillen.
Good evening, Dr. Cash, Mr. Johnson, and members of the board. I'd like to present to you tonight the Teacher Assistant of the Year. That would be Terry Wall. Mr. Johnson and Dr. Cash, would you help me present this award? Ms. Wall has been employed with Ardenale Statesville Schools since November of 2001. She has worked at East Iredel Elementary and Northview Elementary. When Cloverleaf opened their doors, she transitioned to the new campus with the staff. Ms. Wall truly cares about children. She, her lively personality shows in her daily interactions with children and staff. She is hardworking, dependable, and often goes beyond her duties to ensure what is best for children. She heads the social committee at Cloverleaf Elementary and recently organized the end-of-the-year luncheon for the staff. In the words of her principal, Alicia Klor, "She does the job because she cares about children." Ms. Wall, thank you so much for your dedication to Ardenale Statesville Schools and the children.
Next, we have the Principal of the Year. Mr. Johnson.
Thanks, Dr. Cash. John, come on up, and we're going to do this in two phases. We're going to do you, and then we want to bring your family up. Will that be okay? Yeah. But we're going to embarrass you real good and put you right there front and center, so all these folks can hear this. Tonight, we would like to recognize Mr. John Ribick as the 2013-14 Principal of the Year. Mr. Ribick has served ISS as a Teacher Assistant Principal and Principal in an exemplary fashion during his career. He is a leader that embraces the core values of our district and is totally committed to our vision of inspiring student learning by igniting a passion for learning. Mr. Ribick loves children, and he goes about his work with the heart of a servant. He is a data-driven leader and totally focused on student achievement. He personally cares about each of his students and makes their safety and well-being a daily priority in his school. He is collaborative and has mastered the art of working with his staff to achieve the goals that they have set forth for their school. To my knowledge, Mr. Ribick is the only principal in the history of our district that has been selected by his peers, not once, but twice for this, for this high honor. I think this speaks volumes about the level of respect and admiration that he has in our school system. So tonight, we say congratulations to Mr. Ribick, who will now represent ISS at the district level. Congratulations, John.
Okay, next we have Dr. Hargrave presenting the Assistant Principal of the Year.
Thank you, Dr. Cash, Mr. Johnson, members of the board. Tonight, we would like to recognize our District Assistant Principal of the Year, and that person is Ms. Tanya Haupt. So if she would come forward. Ms. Haupt has been employed with Iredel Statesville Schools since 2003. Ms. Haupt has been employed with Iredell Statesville Schools since 2003. She has been a middle school teacher and an assistant principal. She is currently the Assistant Principal at East Iredell Middle School. Ms. Haupt has been described as a leader in every aspect by her staff at the middle school. When she sees a problem, she addresses it quickly, quietly, with a great deal of humility, and with care. Ms. Haupt has a deep love for the students that she works with, and she constantly encourages them to seek beyond what they believe is their best. Ms. Haupt has a family, uh, first attitude as she seeks to get to know each of her staff members individually. She is supportive of students and staff and works very well in the community. So, Ms. Haupt, congratulations. Mr. Rogers, would you come forward and help me present the certificate, please? And likewise, I'm not gonna be outdone. Uh, we're gonna get a picture of her, and then I think she bought her fan club, so we'll get a picture of her fan club.
Mr. Rogers, they may have already gotten theirs. Yeah.
Again, congratulations.
Next we have the Instructional Facilitator of the Year, uh, Mr. Todd.
Dr. Cash, board members, Mr. Johnson, it is my pleasure to share with you, and you, as you see in your packet, we have an Instructional Facilitator of the Year. Not only do we view this position in our district as value-add, we attribute a lot of student success to the coaching, the support, and the guidance that our curricular, instructional facilitators provide, uh, every one of our schools each and every day. This year's Instructional Facilitator of the Year, up until recently, has supported our district heavily in those areas. Recently, she has had a change in life event. She has left our district and gone to a different district, but we still want to recognize the importance of the position, and with that, Amanda Stegall and her work that she's put into our system over the years. So, thank you for, uh, recognizing her.
Okay, next we have the Student Services Staff Member of the Year, Kelly Marcy.
Good evening, Dr. Cash, Mr. Johnson, board members. Um, each year, principals, assistant principals, and student services staff nominate a Student Services Person of the Year. Tonight, we've invited this person to be recognized, um, and that is, that person is Michelle Fries. She is our school, one of our only two social workers, um, and we're very proud to, um, award her with this this evening. Um, just a, a couple things about Michelle. Michelle has been employed in the district since January of 2002. Um, she came to our district and she was a social worker, and then for two years, she was actually an EC teacher. Um, she decided she loved social work so much that she, um, wanted to, um, continue in social work, and she has been a social worker since that time. Um, interestingly enough, we, since the budget reductions, we have, at one time, we had five social workers, and now we're down to two, um, to manage, I, I can't even tell you how many processes, along with attendance and the needs of schools. Um, last year, our lead social worker, um, who's our other social worker, actually was diagnosed with cancer. Um, and so she was out, uh, a, a large part of last school year, um, with treatment and those kinds of pieces, and so Michelle filled the role of the entire social work department, and I might add, wonderfully. Um, and it really is a go-getter and really does a good job advocating for families and students. So, please congratulate Michelle and...
Next we have the Instructional Technology Coordinator of the Year, uh, David Blatner. I guess Ethan Todd's filling in for David.
Dr. Cash, board members, Mr. Johnson, it is, again, my distinct pleasure tonight to be before you and present to you Iredell Statesville Schools Instructional Technology Coordinator of the Year, Mrs. Jackie Parker. Could I have her come forward, please? I'll have you know, uh, board members, Mr. Johnson, Mrs. Parker provides opportunities for teacher to, teachers to infuse technology into their lessons and into their instructional practice. Her influence is not limited, though, to just a single campus. She is a member of a team who serves multiple school sites and, and areas around our system. Her expertise goes far beyond troubleshooting hardware or software issues. Her expertise also reaches into the innovation of infusing technology into the lives of our students and their day-in, day-in and day-out lessons to excite them about curriculum and invigorate teachers on a different way of teaching, uh, with our students. So, Dr. Cash and Mr. Johnson, if you'd join me out, down in front to present Mrs. Parker with her certificate as Instructional Technology Coordinator of the Year.
Next we have the Custodial Team of the Year, uh, Dr. Miller.
Thank you, Dr. Cash, members of the board, Superintendent Johnson. Um, both of our schools tonight that we're gonna recognize are in Mr. Brader's district, so I'm gonna ask him if he would please come forward to help us with our awards. There are some certificates on the end. Mr. Brader, if you can help us with those. I would like to say that all of our classified staff, all of our support services are key to the success that this school system has had. Forgive the analogy, but if we put a soldier in the field, then you're gonna find about five or six soldiers supporting that soldier in the field through logistics. And logistics are the key to what makes everything run smooth. And one of the key parts of logistics is keeping our schools safe, clean, neat, orderly, and our custodial staffs do a fantastic job at, at that, uh, challenge. Especially since funding has been cut and our staff's working about eighty-five percent of maximum staff. So, uh, all of our schools are working at about eighty-five percent of full staffing. These folks do a fantastic job, and to give you an example, one of our, our teams that, uh, will be coming forward in just a minute, asked me when they were on the agenda. I'm like, are, are we early on the agenda? And I'm like, a lot, I don't know, well, look. He's, this person said, "We gotta get back, 'cause we got a school to clean." So that shows you the dedication these folks have to their schools. They take pride, they love the kids, and they love their schools. So without further ado, we have two schools we'd like to recognize. Our first school, uh, is Troutman Middle School, and it is our middle school, high school winner. They finished the year with a score of ninety-nine point eight out of a possible hundred, which is fantastic. And I would ask that Kathy Walker, I think, is representing the school, come forward to get a certificate for the school. And the team members are Terry Cherry, if he'll come forward. I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong, John Daniels, Donna Hay Cox, Sharpe, Thomas Sharp, and Ronnie Hamm. If you've not been in Troutman Middle School, I graduated from Troutman Middle School, so that tells you something about the, the challenge that these folks face. But, one of our principals used to say he liked to see his teeth in the floor. You can see your teeth in the floor at Troutman Middle. It was a fantastic job. Yes, sir. Thank you. The way we score our, our schools, we have four inspections a year, one each quarter. The first inspection is by the administration and our staff, our custodial administrative staff. The second one is, uh, done by our internal staff. The third is an individual inspection of each custodian, and the last one is an outside, uh, group that comes in and actually inspects, which is outside the school system. So you can imagine, it's very, very difficult to score high on something like that. And we have, every year, the outside agencies that come in and, and score us say, "Your folks do a fantastic job. We see all the school systems around the districts surrounding us, and y'all do a great job." So these folks do a fantastic job. And you can imagine that type of scoring, how in the world do you score a hundred? Shepherd's Elementary scored a hundred last year, and that's our elementary custodial team of the year. They are composed of Terry Cherry, Shannon Jackson, Tina Sharp, and Marty Espel. Teresa Wall. If, if Ms. Wall's here, she'll come forward, Ms. Wall. Ms. Wall's the principal at Shepherd. Thank you very much.
Okay, next we have the Primetime Director of the Year, that's Andy Trotter to present that.
Dr. Cash, Mr. Johnson, members of the board, it's a great privilege tonight to be able to present the 2013-2014 Primetime Director of the Year Award. Could I invite Dr. Cash and Mr. Johnson to help me present this award to our candidate? The Primetime Director of the Year Award is based upon five areas: leadership, work with students, collaboration with school and community, a commitment to the continuous improvement process, and finally, what sets that candidate apart from others. It is my privilege tonight to present the Primetime Director of the Year Award for 2013 to Ms. Shonda Cowan, Primetime Director at NB Mills. Ms. Cowan, during her eight years as the Director at NB Mills Elementary School, has built a strong team that meets the needs of students in new and innovative ways. She and her team focus daily on providing exemplary customer service for every child and parent, which is defined by listening attentively, acting promptly, and with a sense of urgency. Ms. Cowan has developed a relationship with her school administration and teachers. She uses her ability to effectively communicate with her school staff to develop unique academic opportunities for her students. Ms. Cowan uses the community to bring in presenters, to help her students grow, to become successful adults. She makes every moment count for every child, knowing that her work today will have an effect on each child's future. Continuous improvement is what defines Ms. Cowan and her leadership at NB Mills. She works to find new and innovative activities to engage her students, parents, and staff. She encourages others to work to reach their potential. Ms. Cowan focuses on results. She is resilient and inspires deeper care and attention in those she serves. Ms. Cowan truly lights the way for others. She uses her enthusiasm, knowledge, optimism, and respect to help and support her students, parents, and team members. She is, she lives a mission to make good things happen for others. Ms. Cowan genuinely appreciates people and their contributions. She inspires others so that they can accomplish anything with time, effort, and patience. It is indeed my privilege to present tonight the Primetime Director of the Year Award for the 2000 and 2004, 2013-2014 school year to Ms. Shonda Cowan.
And Mr. Todd, back here again to present the Bus Monitor of the Year.
It is a privilege, again, Dr. Cash, board members, Mr. Johnson, to present to you, uh, Transportation EC, Exceptional Children's Department, Bus Monitor of the Year. Can I please invite, is Vicky Sherrill here tonight? Come on up, Vicky. Dr. Cash and Mr. Johnson, if you'll help me present the certificate. We're gonna embarrass you a little bit, Vicky. Vicky Sherrill always has a smile, as you can see on her face. She has a pleasant attitude to go along with that smile. She is very attentive to the needs of all students that she has to come into contact with on a daily basis. She provides a caring and, most importantly, safe atmosphere for all the students that ride the bus with her. Anytime there has to be a sub-driver on the bus, Vicky is going to arrive early to make sure she greets the sub-person. Upon greeting, she discusses the route, the needs of the children, and any other pertinent information that driver may need to complete the route in an efficient, effective, and friendly manner. Please join me in recognizing Iredell Statesville Schools Bus Monitor of the Year, Ms. Vicky Sherrill. Dr. Cash and Mr. Johnson, please don't get too comfortable. It is my honor, the next agenda item and the last one, to present to you our Media Center Specialist of the Year, if you come down and help me with that. Is Lori with us tonight, Lori Lowell? Come on up, Lori. Media specialists, board, as you know, are essential to us supporting and promoting 21st century skills and student literacy outcomes across our system. Tonight, we acknowledge this through the work of our media center, or media specialist... Tonight, we acknowledge this through the work of our media center, or media specialist of the year. Iredale Statesville Schools wants to acknowledge this work through the work of Lori Lowell as our media specialist of the year. Dr. Cash, Mr. Johnson, if you'd just stay there for one more short moment. We've come upon some information, most recently, that Iredale Statesville Schools also is home to a regional media center, media specialist of the year. And this is through the North Carolina School Library and Media Association. Is Ms. Van Vliet here with us? Oh, there she is. Hey, come on up. Ms. Karen Van Vliet has been recognized by the North Carolina School Library and Media Association as the Mountain Region Media Specialist of the Year. And she'll be honored on October fourth, two thousand and thirteen, at a luncheon in Winston. And we wanted to take a moment to recognize you this evening for that achievement. Thank you for the work you do for our students and our system.
Next, we move on to item D, the exemplary service recognition. Mr. Brady Johnson.
Yes, sir. Dr. Cash, members of the board. A few weeks ago, I had the honor of attending a luncheon in Raleigh. And at that luncheon, our finance department and Mrs. Melissa White were honored by the State Board of Education. The award that they received is presented annually to finance officers who have shown effective financial management in the use of state funds, accurate and timely reporting, and no salary audit exceptions or position overdrafts for the fiscal year. When I told Melissa that I wanted to bring her in and recognize her, she said under one condition, and that is she wanted to bring her staff. So we're going to honor all of these ladies tonight. And if you could make your way to the front, please. And Dr. Cash, again, if you'll join me, we'd like to honor our finance department for exemplary
The finance department makes our school system look good. Every year for the last several years, we've gotten recognitions by multiple agencies that govern and oversee the finance portion of our school governance and the district shines every year. We do appreciate your work. And Melissa, thanks for insisting that the whole staff come.
I have to allow the retirement.
Next, we have the NCAE Board of Directors. Mr. Johnson.
Yes, sir. Dr. Cash, members of the board, tonight we'd like to recognize one of our own, Carla Fassbender, who is the instructional facilitator at Lake Shore Middle School. Mrs. Fassbender was recently elected to serve as a member of the Board of Directors of the North Carolina Association of Educators. In this position, Carla will join a distinguished statewide group of educators who represent teachers, administrators, classified employees, and other educators in North Carolina. ISS will be the direct beneficiary of the insight, knowledge, and influence that Carla will gain as a member of the NCAE Board. Service on the board will give Carla the opportunity to deliberate on current trends and education policy, issues that will have a tremendous impact on student achievement, on recruitment and retention of quality school employees, and on the advancement of public education. In addition, service on the NCAE Board will provide Carla with the opportunity to interact and have influence on the governor, the council of state, the general assembly, and the State Board of Education. Congratulations to Carla on assuming this new leadership role. And Carla, if you could join us down front, please. Dr. Cash?
There's many trips back and forth, but that's great. We really enjoy this every year. Let's move on to the non-consent agenda. We'll move to the administration portion, item A, Policy Number sixty-four oh two, participation by the historically underutilized businesses. This is a second reading and will require a vote by the board. Melissa.
All righty. Like Dr. Cash said, this is Policy Number sixty-four oh two. It is a second reading. It's participation by historically underutilized businesses. And this policy relates to purchases of equipment, material, and supplies. We had the first reading last month, and since that time, I have received no feedback from the public. Are there any further questions I can answer about this policy?
Any questions, comments? If not, entertain a motion that we approve Policy Number sixty-four oh two.
Sub move.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. And next, we'll move on to Policy Number sixty-four thirty, State Purchasing Requirements for Equipment, Materials, and Supplies. This also is a second reading and requires a vote.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. This would be a new policy for the board. We currently have been following our internal purchasing policy manual when it comes to setting guidelines and bid thresholds for informal and formal bids. Therefore, we decided it would be best to adopt a formal board policy. And in doing so, we would also, within that policy, adopt state statute guidelines for when informal and formal bids are required for the purchase of equipment, materials, and supplies. This would be different guidelines than relate to construction activities, just so we're clear. And the only difference that we have incorporated into this policy is when it relates to purchases that are initiated by individual schools. We did feel like their threshold needed to be a little lower for securing informal bids. Their threshold is at three thousand dollars in this proposed policy versus the thirty thousand dollars that is the minimum set by state statute, or I guess the maximum. This is the second reading. We have had no feedback from the public regarding this policy. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I want to tell Melissa, thank you for researching that part on the county.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Make a motion, we accept this.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve this policy. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, next, we move on to the two thousand and thirteen, fourteen budget resolution.
We did finally get our state budget, and that's why this budget resolution is about a month later than typically. This will be the resolution that will pass for the thirteen, fourteen school year. The total budget is one hundred and sixty-six million, eight hundred and thirty thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars. Now, granted, we will have amendments that will come throughout the year. This budget does not reflect one hundred percent of our federal grants that we will receive. Hopefully, I will have those final grants for you and can put them in an amendment next month. We have just not gotten final approval from DPI just yet. That's why they're not included here. But the resolution does reflect a slight decrease in per pupil funding from the state. As you know, our appropriations from Iredale County are the same as they were last year on a per pupil basis for local current expense. Capital outlay from Iredale County did increase about twenty-five percent. So given that, our total increase from Iredale County was four hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. The budget resolution does, for the state budget, reflect a decrease for our cost of using the North Carolina Virtual Public School. That was three hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. And it also has been reduced for our students that have left us to go to charter schools, new charter schools, and also higher-than-expected growth in existing charter schools. That was a reduction of one point three million dollars. The initial budget does propose to budget four hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars in capital outlay fund balance. Should that budget come to fruition, we would have available one point six million in fund balance in capital outlay at the end of this school year. Also, the local current expense budget does propose to use one point four million in fund balance, and that would leave us with about seven point three million in available fund balance at the end of the year. The details of the budget resolution are a few pages down. You want to scroll down, Kelly? Oh, somebody, okay. So those are the details broken down by funding source for your budget. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Just to, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Ms. Bottom.
Just to be clear, our per pupil expenditure has gone down, contrary to what the state is telling everyone. Is it just us particularly, or have we been, have we been hit more than others? Or do you, do you have a feel for how the rest of the state is, is looking as far as their per pupil expenditures?
Well, no, ma'am. I do not know how the rest of the state has been affected. I mean, we're all in the same, you know, dealing with the same funding source. But some units get a little bit different money than we do. Some units get low wealth money. Some units get small county funding. So it's hard to say necessarily exactly how we stack up, but I imagine that everyone is feeling the same pain that we are. I do know that we're down about twelve million dollars from the two thousand and eight and nine school year, and that was really our last, quote-unquote, "good" funding year from the state. If you compare us to the thirteen, fourteen, to the just last year, we're almost even. We're down about point three, three percent on a per pupil basis. But we still have a long ways to go to get back to where we were before the recession started.
Ms. White, when North Carolina Virtual Public School first started, it was no cost to participate.
Correct.
Is that correct? So now we're at three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. But still, for the number of students that participate in that, that's still a bargain for what it would cost us to have classroom space.
Yeah, I can't argue with that.
Yeah. Granted, it would be a whole lot better if it didn't cost us that, but...
We liked it when it was free, yes.
Yeah. It's still a pretty good deal. The only other question I had was, this budget amendment, especially the state money, is kind of a moving target because there's some funds in there that, that we have to estimate, and that's because we don't know yet. Can you talk about that just briefly, please?
Sure. I have tried to estimate for what I expect our final budget to be. Let's say, let's take transportation, for instance. We do not get our final transportation allotment until about December. So the state does put out a tool that you can use to try to estimate what your transportation final allotment will, will be, but that's not going to be known until that money actually comes in. Secondly, also with transportation, we get two reimbursements annually for early college transportation. So again, I don't know what that's going to be until we actually incur those costs and request reimbursement from the state, based my budget on how historical reimbursements have been. And not to continue to harp on transportation, but sometimes we'll get a little bit of extra money for fuel throughout the year. Our technology budget, we do not have all of our technology budget yet. We are supposed to get some funding from the state for the Excellent Public Schools Act. We have not gotten that allotment yet, so I do not know what that final number is going to be. We are supposed to get a little bit of money from the Indian Gaming Funds, from the Cherokee Casino. We have not received those funds yet. So yes, there is a lot of money still to come that I will change this figure.
And those will be addressed with budget amendments like we typically do throughout...
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions about this proposed budget resolution? If not, entertain a motion that we approve the budget resolution as presented.
Sub move.
Okay. All right, we've got a motion and a second, apparently. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next, we have the Edmentum Contract.
Okay, this contract has been secured by David Blatner. He is not here tonight. However, this contract is to incorporate something that has been used in a lot of our schools. It's called Study Island. And historically, each school has individually procured this software with the vendor. And Dr. Blatner has procured a district contract to where we'll pay one time to the vendor for all the schools that are willing to participate or that want to participate. And by doing so, we've saved approximately twenty thousand dollars. I'm sorry, twenty percent. This contract comes before you because the estimated cost is above fifty thousand dollars, so it does require board approval. I think the estimated cost on this contract is a hundred and six thousand dollars. And each, each school that chooses to participate will pay that either from their school funds or with the district allotted supplies and materials budget. A hundred and six thousand dollars is over two years, so half of that would be paid this year, half will be paid next year. Are there any questions?
Anytime we can save twenty percent, certainly a good thing. So we appreciate Mr. Blatner, his department, doing that.
Yes, sir.
Just for clarification, so the individual schools still pay out of their own school budgets their portion, but this group contract just brought the cost down twenty percent?
Yes, sir.
For the whole. Any other comments or questions? If not, entertain a motion to approve the Edmentum Contract as presented.
Sub move.
For a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And then we have one more, the Soliant Health Contract.
Yes, sir. This contract came to our attention last week. This is a contract for a visually impaired teacher. The position was posted. We had a teacher who was on payroll, who retired, who was providing this service. They did post the position, and unfortunately, no one applied. So this is a service, obviously, that we are required to provide to our students, and therefore, we had to seek an outside source for the service. So Soliant Health has agreed to, to do the service at a rate of seventy-one dollars an hour, not to exceed eighty thousand dollars. The exceptional children's allotment from state funds will cover the cost of this contracted service. And I'll be happy to try to answer any questions that you might have.
Is this traditionally, excuse me, go ahead, Mr. Kelly.
Where is Soliant? Where is that?
I'm not sure, sir. I'm sorry. I mean, they're local, they're within the state of North Carolina. I don't know exactly where they're located. Is that your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
State of North Carolina, but maybe not our county.
Yeah, I can find out. Maybe it says on this contract somewhere. Kind of just presenting on behalf of exceptional children, I do not know where they are located.
Has this traditionally been a, and I can imagine it is, a tough position to fill?
Human Resources can probably speak a little better to that, but obviously, by the fact no one's replied, probably so. Yes, sir.
So if anybody's, young folks looking for a career, it'd probably be a good one, right?
Well...
Any other comments or questions about that proposed contract? If not, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the contract from Soliant Health to provide a teacher for the visually impaired.
Sub move.
Have a motion and a second, Mr. Brader. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries, too. Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
Dr. Cash, I think it's interesting, the question that Mr. Schumacher just pointed out there. This is a great career for somebody to go into. If we had found a teacher, we would have paid that person thirty thousand, eight hundred dollars a year. So just look at the gap between working in the private sector as a contractor...
So, just look at the gap between working in the private sector as a contracted worker and what you would work for us with your benefits. And that's a first-year teacher out of college, but do you see the gap between what we're paying our folks and what you'll make out there in the private sector? It's phenomenal.
No further comments about the non-consent agenda. We'll move on to the public comments section. Cindy Haynes has signed up to speak to us about the safety in the school buildings. Cindy.
Good evening, school board members. It's me again, Cindy Haynes. Recently, I've read where security in the schools have tightened, including posting Statesville Police Department substations at several of the city's schools in the name of the safety for our students. And we should, we should consider the health and safety of our Iredell Statesville students. That's why these, there are rules and policies set forth by this Board for its employees, students, parents, and guests to follow. Quote, "Iredell Statesville Schools' Facilities and Planning Department will provide and maintain a safe, clean, and comfortable learning environment in a courteous and efficient manner within the available resources." Unquote. This is the mission statement of the Facilities and Planning Department. My concern tonight involves the Facilities and Planning Department under the management of Dr. Hargrave and Kenny Miller. Were you, the school board, aware that Presley School was on the verge of being shut down, closed, the week before school started on August 26th? I hope you were. You should have been. Did you know that Kenny Miller failed to obtain building permits required by law to build a doorway in the hall at Presley Alternative School? He had his employees build the opening with a 36-inch egress instead of the required 72-inch egress. I can only imagine what would have happened if a fire had occurred with a school full of students and staff trying to get out single file. It is my belief that Kenny Miller knew better. This was not the only violation. There were violations of the fire code that were observed in the weeks prior to the school start. Ask Kenny Miller about Statesville High School and MB Mills. On second thought, don't ask him. Ask the Statesville Fire Department if you want to know exactly what happened or didn't happen. It's apparent that ISS has a strained relationship with the county commissioners. Now, do you want a damaged relationship with other governmental entities such as the Iredell County Fire Marshal and Statesville Fire Department? I don't think so. ISS, including Kenny Miller, are not above the law. When building or construction occurs at one of the Iredell Statesville Schools, Mr. Miller needs to follow the rules. More importantly, he needs to follow the law. In your policy code, the school board, your code, 9020, Facility Design, it says, "New or renovated facilities must be designed to meet all legal requirements, including legal standards for accessibility and use of facilities by persons with disabilities." You also have a policy code, 9200, the care and maintenance of facilities. It says, "The principal will inspect school buildings for health, fire, and safety hazards on a regular basis, and as required by law. Principals shall notify the superintendent and the maintenance director of repairs needed to meet safety standards." On down, it says, "The director of maintenance shall maintain a complete maintenance file for each school in the county. Each file shall contain any requests for maintenance made by principals, a listing of all maintenance performed, the date performed, and the approximate cost." Going back to the one at Presley Alternative School, they had to tear down an already-built structure. So, you can look in the files for when they put it up. They had to tear it down, and they had to rebuild it. A waste of our money, the taxpayers' money, if someone had been doing their job. I think ISS dodged a bullet this time, but had those schools been shut down, each one of you board members would have heard from the parents, a lot of parents. The mission statement states, "A safe learning environment." Thank you for allowing me to voice my concerns to you this evening.
Thank you. This is the only speaker we had sign up. Are there any other members of the audience that would like to speak to the Board? Not, we'll move on to the superintendent's comments. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Dr. Cash, members of the Board. I read in the paper a few days ago that Governor McCrory had received school safety recommendations from a panel that he had appointed earlier. And in, in the report, two of the findings was that there needed to be more anti-bullying efforts in the public schools of North Carolina, and we needed to find better ways to punish students beyond out-of-school suspension. I, as I read that article over the weekend in the local newspaper, I was encouraged because I do think that we're doing a pretty good job with our alternative schools of addressing the rate of out-of-school suspension in our school systems, and I do think that each of our schools, elementary, middle, and high, are, are doing a, a good job of trying to find alternative ways of holding kids accountable when they, when they misbehave. As far as the bullying was concerned, I, I, I thought it was good that anti-bullying efforts are catching a lot of state attention and that the governor now is going to be asking school systems all across our state to step up their efforts to make sure that, that kids are safe and secure in schools and not being bullied. A few months ago, I had one of our students come to me with her mom, and she had pointed out that in one of our local schools, she had been bullied. This student is now a freshman at Statesville High School, and so she asked me, and this was, this was before school got out, probably later April or early May. She asked me if she could take on a leadership role in trying to address bullying in our school system. And I thought, my goodness, this, this young lady is, is a rising ninth grader, and this is a, a topic that is a priority for her. So, we spent a couple of hours just brainstorming what it would look like if she would lead an effort in our school system. Well, I'm happy to report to you that her vision is going to become a reality on September the 19th. At Statesville High School that day, we will be sponsoring a district-wide summit, and we're calling it the Ignite Summit. The student, Jennifer McLean, has been working diligently all summer long with her peers and with staff members in the school system to pull together student leaders from all of our middle schools and all of our high schools. And what they're going to be doing on September the 19th is getting together, and they will be hearing speakers. Some of those are local, and some are renowned across our state. And the topic that they will be bullying and what we, as a community of schools, can do to decrease the number of incidents of bullying in our school system. So, I'd like to invite all of the board members that might be available that day or part of the day to come by and look at this student-led initiative. What those students are going to be doing that day is charging each other to go back to their individual schools and put a program in place that will not only raise awareness about the harmful effects of bullying, but also to make it antisocial, that, that we will not tolerate bullying in any of our schools. The thing that I'm most proud about is this, this vision came from one student, and she has worked very, very hard to make this a reality. So, we're very excited about the summit. These students will then be charged to go back to their schools and put something in place and to come back in the spring of the year and then report out to the group on how successful they have been and give us the data and, and see if they can drive down the incidence of bullying across our school system. Bullying is not only something that is a responsibility, though, of teachers and administrators, it's, it's also the responsibility of parents to make sure that we're teaching our, our children to be kind and to be respectful of others. So, I, again, I'm very, very excited about this summit, and again, I hope that you can be part of that day. Thank you, Dr. Cash.
Thank you. We have some announcements of upcoming meetings for the Board. We have September 25th afternoon spent in Ash County for our district school board meeting. Then, October 7th will be our next committee of the whole meeting here at 5:00 PM. Excuse me, at, at ADR at 5:00 PM. Then, October 14th, the Board of Education meeting will be here at 6:00 PM. We do need to go into closed session tonight to discuss personnel issues. You're a motion to go into closed session. Chairman, according to North Carolina General Statute Number 143-31811, I make a motion that the Board enter into closed session to discuss a personnel issue. Have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for your attendance tonight.